Next item, please.
The first review budget 2021 to 2022 in Esser Funds, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Maliko, members of the board. This is our annual meeting that we usually give you a budget update. So the first one is just the calendar of events. You'll see this is very similar presentation last year, the numbers have changed and all that, but the format is relatively the same. So we're early on in the process. You know, the governor just gave out her budget proposal for next school year. That kind of starts off 2223 budget, but we're still on the 2122 budget this year. So this is our first amendment, and we usually do two a year. Now we'll do our first amendment, at the end of the year, we'll do our second amendment. And this starts off with always looking at, you know, where we're at. So again, here's just a pictorial of our funds. The two major changes is you'll see in the debt funds on the agenda tonight is the approval of the 21 or 2021 refunding. Well, actually, I got it typed over there, should be 20 refunding. No, 2022, we're aren't. Sorry, I lost track of which calendar year. The 2022 refunding, that'll be acted on tonight. And on the bottom left-hand side, the Esser Funds. So if remember back, when we were adopting the budget in May of last year, we weren't sure what our Esser funding allocations were going to be, and the governor was taking, and the legislature was taking time to approve it. So those were approved in September of this 21 and December of 21. We got our Esser III funds. So now they're included into our first amendment. This is just looking at the total budgets changes for the general operating fund. You can see there's roughly about a $10 million increase for our general fund this year. And I'll go into more detail later, but just kind of give you a pie chart of what it looks like. Looking for all funds by expenditures, one of the key things of the takeaway here is that we've increased our expenditures by $70 million this year. And, you know, majority of it is the capital improvement with our Esser III funds. We're taking 40 million of our Esser III funds and putting it towards air quality. So that'll be a big change. In addition, we have about $20 million or $10 million more in the general fund from our operating expenses and 20 million in our grant funds. And feel free to stop me if I'm going too fast, but yes.
One question, when you're talking about the 70 million more with, and especially the Esser, there's a timeline on how quickly we have to use the Esser.
Correct.
So if we're looking at a year-to-year basis right now, it could look like things are ballooning because we've got to use that money in a certain time.
Correct. For Esser II, we have to use it by September of '22. Esser III by September of '23. So yeah, so there's a quick timetable, so we have to use the money quickly.
So in theory, if a person's looking at this a couple of years from now, they could see that our expenses dropped tremendously, but that's because we had the one-time money that we had to use.
Correct. And we have to be careful when the money does drop that there's a funding gap, that we have to make sure we're able to absorb any things that are in the grants if we want to continue those programs going forward.
Thanks.
So this is just changing, it's the same, the model for the expenditures for the general fund, but it's done by object code. Normally, when the board approves it by function code, like, you know, instruction, support. But this is how this looks across all funds. So it's just, again, just showing you the difference from the 355 million we had last year to 425 million this year. So just broken down by categories. You see the second line item where our capital A went from 7 million to 44 million. And that's the increase of the Esser Funds, not the full 40, but a good 30 million plus on it. On the revenue side, same thing. You know, you'll see that our revenues pretty much match our expenditures due to the increase in revenues from our state aid. Back when we adopted the budget back in June, we didn't have a final state aid until July, so we have to estimate. Fortunately, they found out after the year progressed that the money was more available due to sales tax and income tax increases. So they gave us additional money. This is just our student counts. If you actually have fallen on your handout, the number did change on this one. But our student count didn't go down. You remember last year, they gave us what we call a super blend. They took 75% of the year before and 20% of the current year to help districts during the pandemic because they knew the enrollment was going to go, you know, widely arranged. So that has gone away. So the full 467 is what we reduced this year, but it really was closer to about 200 that we lost in the normal counts. On our student counts, they just, the first one is the 183 from the previous year, 467. Kind of going over that already. A new categorical goal, they increased our special ed costs from 2% to 4.1% going into more of the philosophy that Dr. Maliko and I presented last year, about going more to where the funding is needed for the child. So special ed, ESL, transportation, those kind of things. There was a new categorical for us, the 20M again. If our foundation allowance increase is greater than the rate of inflation, they can't give us the foundation allowance, so they give us the categorical to make that difference. In addition, we talked briefly about the COVID grants. Those are new funds this year for Esser II and Esser III. Only 124 million has been awarded so far out of the 140-some. And the district budget will basically use some of our personnel costs into the grant as allowable, which allows us to potentially do a different one-time cost in our general fund. Looking at our general operating, again, that's just a duplicate. So one of that on the expenditure side, we had a lot of letters of agreement that were approved through the negotiation process. So that was basically for staff retention and recruitment. And so it did raise our general fund costs for salary and benefits. In addition, on the COVID side, a lot of our pandemic-related virtual school, our mental health positions that we've added, we had some bonuses and hiring bonuses for retention and recruitment that are in there. And our summer school from last year was in there, the large summer school, and some bonuses. So a lot of that additional one-time cost was paid from Esser Funds. So we did maximize the use of KIRIS funds as much as possible. So things that was not usually allowable to supplement versus supplying in grants, but this one allowed us to, as long as it was pandemic-related, we were able to charge it to the COVID grant, the KIRIS grant. So that generated surplus. Last year, we had a large amount put in for building in site. And this year, we're, we won't be able to do as much, but less because we're actually in person. And that's where we're getting our large capital improvement program of roughly 80 million of the Esser Funds and our funds to be able to do some air quality work in the schools. Also, there's some additional funding in there for technology and supplies in the Esser Fund. And the expansion of the newcomer early college program was also new this year. And also with the closure of last year, a lot of buildings didn't use their per pre-poll allocation for the building level. So we had to bump up the budget as they're using some reserves from last year or they're allowed to carry it forward. So that is also included in the budget. So the one-time surplus, staffing investments we talked about. We did some emergency and safety investments this year. And we've already talked about the Esser funding for the capital projects. So this is just looking at the more of a monetary look at it. Again, just showing the top where our capital projects was increased by our Esser Funds and the Capital Project Fund by 36 million. And then again, just showing you the change in the increase of 7 million in expenses that we talked earlier. So just a different way of looking at it for those that are more number-oriented versus pie graphs. On the general fund side, again, the state aid from where we got increased from our budgeted number from previously. And again, on operational costs, roughly about 10 million for additional salary costs of the general fund is picking up from the new LOAs, letters of agreement. On the, this is more looking at the expenditure side, looking at an object code versus the function code, as I mentioned earlier. So you just see the increase on the salary level from the original budget to the amendment, went from 105 million to 112 million. And the FICA retirement went from 51 million to 55 million. Those are that 10 million that we kind of absorbed in the general operating fund, which, of course, we just had to absorb and reduce our capital project transfers. So that's why you see the kind of the offset there, so we can afford the program. Again, this is just looking at the special revenue funds. The large increase is the federal state revenues for the KIRIS funds that came in for this year. And that's it. I went through it quick. So this is more of a discussion item, just talking about the budget. And you'll actually formally approve the budget at the March board meeting.
Trustee Moszep.
Thank you, Madam President. I've asked this before to Dr. Maliko and to you, Tom. I know a lot of folks are reviewing this data and saying that Dearborn Schools did receive, and the city of Dearborn obviously received a lot of COVID grants from the federal government as well as the state government. So do we have designated area now on our website that shows?
Correct. That is, there is actually, on our website, it's part of the transparency reporting section just on Esser Funds.
Right.
So actually, the next president's presentation is on Essers, and this is actually included there, plus our communication department does an excellent job. I've actually flyers that we've given out to schools.
Yes.
And actually has been in the newsletters, too.
Great. That's, that's, that's good to see. Thank you.
So if you'd like, I can go quickly through the Essers, and then you can see if there's more questions.
Absolutely.
So this is just a timetable, release dates, because people think we got all this money years ago. Nope. The very first Esser and KIRIS funds, the first year came out on 9/8/21. And we actually were submitting our, our budget on 9/10, and it was quickly approved after that. Those were all the funds that came, actually originally from the, you know, March 20 date. It took them a good year to kind of get us to organize what we could spend the money on. And so we were fronting all that funds, but they allowed us to go back to the March 20 date. Thank you, Dave, for making that bigger. On Esser II funds, it was released on two phases. The first one on 4/19 and the second one on 5/10. We submitted one on 4/23, and we actually submitted early on the other one. But they didn't approve it until May and September. So just kind of show you that we're, it wasn't just, here's the money and work with it. You had to kind of work with the state on them interpreting the laws from the federal side to the state side and down to the local groups as us. Then Esser III was released on 9/21, phase one. They didn't give us the full 83 million. And on 12/15, we submitted, and it still haven't seen approval on it yet. So those that were spending on Esser III this year, we're basically spending our own money for it, but eventually they'll approve the budget, and then we'll get reimbursed for it, which is not uncommon for grants. So on the first set of money, it was roughly 19.7 million. And this kind of just gives you a breakdown of how we spent that money by category. So on staff retention, for example, is 1.5 million. The large one is the social, emotional, and health staffing. So we actually have part of our counselors in there, part of our nurses, social workers, psychologists, those kind of aspects. It kind of gives you an idea of how we spent the money for that first 19.7 million. On Essers II, it was roughly 38.3 million. This kind of, the largest one that you'll see in here is that expanded summer school. That was our largest expense, but you'll see similar dollar values, not necessarily percentages, for some of the other positions. And again, this is all on the website. And then we also did a State Corps survey, just kind of asking them what they thought we should spend this money on. We see 389 responses. And here were the results. The largest thing was on staffing, so the mental health side that we addressed. Another large one was on instructional materials. So we actually purchased the new math curriculum and reading curriculum for the elementary and high school. And another one was on infrastructure, which we have set some money aside for, and additional learning time, so that was our summer school. So we were trying to hit the main points of what the survey wanted to look in. Looks like we did a pretty good job on that. We also did administrative survey, so you'll see similar things, that you'll see infrastructure on there, staffing, and technology. So we did purchase new Chromebooks, 15,000, you know, so earlier in this year to help replace the text or the Chromebooks that we gave out to parents at that time. Then Esser III, now this one is 86 million. Again, they haven't released all the money yet. They just released the first 63 million, which we don't even have approval yet, even though we submitted our budget. But again, you'll see the largest item on this one, out of the full 86, that we're spending 40 million of that on infrastructure for air quality. Next one is staff and retention and recruitment. Those are all those bonuses I talked about earlier that are going towards those grants. Social, emotional, so a lot of those costs for nurses, counselors, social workers are maintaining through that time. And then online learning, we've started a virtual school this year, and so that cost is in there. And once we get approval for the first 63, we'll do a second approval. But as part of this, we want to make sure we're keeping the lines open of communication, what the public and the community want. And that's it.
Anyone? No questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Wall.
All right, thank you.
Next item, please.
I just want to wish my wife happy Valentine's.
Smart man.
This is, this is a cheap way of going.
Well noted.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times.
Before you call the first person, I just want to make a reminder to everyone to please address the chair, and cross-communications is not appropriate. So thank you. First one, please.
Doha Ali would like to come and speak to the board about the principal at Gear Park.
Hi.
Hi.
This is Doha Ali. She doesn't speak that much English, but she wants to talk in Arabic. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Salaam alaikum. Ani men ahali Gear Park, wa amathla ahali, li awladi ma'ham bil madrasa. Naha, annu tfaqan, annu muddir, Mr. Loire, annu ghab'an madrasa. Fa, yani, ahali, annu yid sa'alu, hal, annu, yani, naha, nahthar mu, wa nhamen lu kulla, l'huw wa l'iphtaram. Annu, naha, anna kant min ahali, awladi arba'ah fil madrasa. Fa, shak'gnan il al'alam, wa khac'a fi fata'ra tal korona, annu nash'thal, ahali, ma'ah, awladi, yid bi yid, ma'ah, madrasa. Fa, naha, annu, yani, ncedamna, b'shak'la, am, annu, tuqaf min al'alam, aw shi. Fa, kana'ta fata'ra, sa'ba' al'akul, al'akul, al'madaris. Mush bas Gear Park, au, kana'ta ayama tal korona, wa ma'zala't laha'zi, la'ashura, li fa'ta. Yani, gal'mna, kif n'haba al'alam, kif nukun yid wa'ada fil al'alam. Kif nagati ba'adana, idha' ahad ghab', la'annu, ma'fi' amal, bha'zi fata. Annu, kan fi' xof, yani, ani, men ben, li kanu yaxafu, la'annu, zoki, yandu, rabu, yandu, annu, masha'al, shahiyah, kabira. Fa, kant, marat, ani, axaf, aroh al'madasa, ash'thal, wa awladi fil madrasa. Fa, annu, ta'lamna, nukun yid wa'ada. Bina Amerika, l'uzma, yidde' min al'talim. Fa, kana yid wa'ada, ayama fata'ra tal sa'ba. Wa, kulla, ahali, ykun nu'lu, l'huw wa l'iphtaram. Li ma, ani, ashuf, yani, fi' pala't, kana'ta, yd'na fil madrasa, korona, naha, naxaf. L'dr'ajat, annu, yani, nara, tuf li yastaf'ra, hua, awal, wa'ad, yikun, bil mukadme, l'tan'zif, bil cafetiriyab. Yani, ta'lamna, minu, huw al'alam, huw iphtaram al'alam. Huw iphtaram ahali, bil dr'ajal, annu, hua, li yh'tna, iphtaram al'madasa, iphtaram ahali. Hau'lu, t'estw'abu, la'f'al, bil fata', ma'agda tal korona. Yani, annu, al'zak'la, li kan fil bait, n'ha'lu, anna, nukun, m'tafahimin, la'ashe'ha, zade' al'madasa. Fa, ahali, yani, bi'dsa'alu, wa kmanu, ykun nu'lu, kulla, l'huw wa l'iphtaram.
Excuse me. I can certainly feel the passion in your voice, and, and I can feel it. But can you give us a brief synopsis of, of what she's saying, please?
She's, she's upset and, and appalled to the fact that Mr. Jamal was taken out of the school because of the fact, she learned to love the school because of him, because of his passion towards the students, towards the teachers, you know? And she just, she just feels very, she's upset, she's angry.
Ishtani.
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 Ishtani. Yani, b'smal ahali.
She wishes that you guys would consider putting him back to the school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about teacher assignments.
Stephanie is actually, she can't make it. We were supposed to go up together, so if you don't mind, I have your questions.
Come on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm doing two people. Stop. So Stephanie, hold on. Stephanie wanted to ask, why are parents locked out of seeing the content of assignments and why you need a password for the library through our website? And then also, will you guys be taking a vote for the mask to keep it, I guess mandated, or to do optional? Trying to think what else. I'm sorry, was not prepared. And are you guys considering for the parents that do want choice? Are you guys going to be considering our decisions and what we feel is best for our kids as well as the parents that want to keep the mask? Because we're not telling the parents to keep, to not put a mask on their child.
We are going to follow the guidelines of the Health Department. We still have some time before that mandate, before, if they do relax the mandate before that happens. There's conversations that have to go through. But absolutely, if it is rescinded, it is the parent's choice. If you're comfortable having your child wear a mask, if a teacher's more comfortable wearing a mask, then by all means, we support that decision of that individual.
Thank you. I, thank you for answering. And then also, you guys remember last meeting? It was eventful. I did go back and I did look at the medical journal. And the only one that I could see was through Henry Ford. It was not Beaumont. But what I also did find out is that Beaumont did release, I want to say, maybe a week and a half ago, I was going to print out the stuff, that the tests, the PCR tests are not, what's the word? Am I, they're not accurate. So to come after me saying that I'm spreading misinformation was uncalled for. I was going to ask for an apology, but I don't want one from you. I think you do deserve.
Please address the chair.
Supporters, your supporters and parents, an apology for actually embarrassing a mother. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some, I have some blue cards. And they do not want to speak, so I'll just read their blue cards.
Okay, please do.
This is from Emily Giodano. I want masks removed from our children. They have suffered enough, science has proven they do little anyway. From a student. We are wondering why there's no explanation about Principal Jamal Loirey, not at our school, to care for our students. I'm sorry, I believe that's from Mamullen. This is from Arwa Al-Sadi, and they don't want to speak, but they wanted to, they just sent Mr. Loirey on here. Albert Akrud, concern about Mr. Loirey. La-ra-ra, I'm sorry. Samuel Gomez, no masks at school for children. Najah El-Mari, Gear Park principal, Mr. LaRura. Rowan, I'm reading the last name. Mad, Madyar. I wish we could have Mr. LaRura back. Thank you, LaRura.
Except that we're really not supposed to mention names.
Yeah. Just say the principal.
Thank you. Jalo Al-Husani, the principal at the school back. And Gear Park. And Ebsao Al-Mawawi, the principal at Gear Park. And that is it.
Thank you, everyone, for bringing your concerns to the board. Next item, please.
If we could just announce, anybody has.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
He forgot when he came up, so if anybody had questions on the Esser funding, we could take them.
You mean from the public? All right.
Oh, yeah, that's required.
Tom.
Okay, if not, if you do come up with some questions, you can always contact the district, and we're welcome to ask, answer your questions. And a lot of the information, all the information that was presented is on the transparency portion of the website. So please look there, and if, while you're looking you run into questions, feel free to contact the district. Thank you. Next item, please.
Action items, special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda, agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Number 13 must be polled. Was there anything else? Anyone? Nope, hearing none. You think that's it?
Okay. Move that action items number 1 through 17 be approved as recommended.
With the exclusion of 13.
Right, be approved as recommended in this agenda, with the exception of 13.
Or some move.
Support.
Okay, we have a move by Trustee Moszep and a support by Trustee Thorpe. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep?
Yes.
Trustee Peschakoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Okay, now we need to go back to item 13. And item 13, go ahead and read it, but it's, we can, we have to call the motion to have the discussion, but the motion will be missing the name. Because the whole point of it is, we have to come up with a name of who we're going to support for that position. You follow me, Trustee Watts?
No, I'm sorry.
No, just read, just read that part.
The recommended action.
Yeah.
Okay.
The recommended action without, and.
Got it. Move that the Dearborn Board of Education casts its vote for blank as candidate for the MASB Board of Directors position for Region 8, Group 6, 43, Year 2.
So we need to have a discussion or, oh, I'm sorry. Moved by Trustee Thorpe and supported by Trustee Peschakoff. So we have to have a discussion and come up with a name. There are four people who have applied or who had ran for that position. Their names are Melody Hines, she's from Wayne Westland. Darlene Pompino, Pompino, from Southgate. Angie Smith from Farmington. And Michael Seewick from Wyandotte. Did anybody have any thoughts that you'd like to share on any of the candidates?
All I can say is I think Darlene has done a very good job in representing the region as far as I've observed, and she has very good resume to back up her service that she's done. So I haven't been dissatisfied with her representing us. From what I read from everybody else, I think she still seems to be an outstanding choice.
I, since you brought up Darlene's name, I do serve with her on the Wayne County Association of School Boards. She does an outstanding job. She's very diligent. She has tremendous credentials, though I would just have to agree with your points of view there. Anyone else had anyone that they? I'm sorry?
What district?
She represents Southgate. I believe so. Let me just double check.
Yeah, that's Southgate.
Yeah, Southgate.
So I believe she is incumbent then?
She is an incumbent. And she also serves on, as she said in her, her bio, she serves on a lot of.
She has a very extensive bio, yeah.
Has any of the candidates, I don't, I didn't see any correspondence from any of the candidates.
They were in board briefs, actually.
I know, they were, but did they correspond to us?
One sent a very, but it was what was sent from the, from Risa as well. No, I think two of them sent. I think Michael sent, sent something recently, very recently within, but they were very short. They weren't as extensive as what she sent us. They weren't as extensive as what she sent us.
So, would we need to remake a motion including her name? How would you want to proceed?
We were just...
Yeah, I kind of wondered about that. When the name comes up, I would just have you reread it, including her name. That's fine, it's a short motion, anyway. So, did someone want to go ahead and make that motion?
I move that we, let me get thirteen's reading. We cast our vote for Darlene Pomponio as candidate for the M A S B Board of Directors position.
Support.
Okay. We had the motion by Trustee Petrichov and supported by Trustee Barry. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee Mozeb?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichov?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes. Okay. Next item, please. Oh, yep, that's the summary is the next item, isn't it?
Summary of agenda action items.
That's okay.
Number one, approval of warrants. Two to four, approval of change orders. Number five, approval of award to Presidio Holdings, Inc., Data Image Systems, and C D W Sales, per Board Report 21-71. Number six, approval of award to Royal Roofing and Triber Roofing. Number seven, approval of award to Phoenix Environmental. Eight to eleven, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number twelve, approval of financial statement. Thirteen, approval of 2022 M A S B Board of Directors. Number fourteen, approval of resolution in support of the I D E A Full Funding Act, per Board Report 21-77. Fifteen, approval of resolution authorizing the issuance and delegating the sale of 2022 refunding bonds, per Board Report 21-78. Number sixteen, approval of 2022 graduates. Number seventeen, approval of donations.
Very good. Real quick, I just want to commend those graduates. Next item, please.
Discussion item, M A S B Annual Leadership Conference, Trustees Barry, Mozeb, and Thorpe.
Ten-minute limit.
It was thirty minutes.
Per person.
We'll take even seven minutes.
Are we going up there or reporting from here?
I'm fine with going up there.
End the song and dance.
Is that where your slides are? And then that way, we don't duplicate.
Sure, yeah, okay, awesome. So, it was an interesting trip. Was it, when was it, November?
November.
Yeah. November to Grand Rapids. The conference was full of many, many meaningful sessions, as well as CBA classes that I, I believe I took three, as well as my colleagues have taken some classes. So, I'm now two classes short of being certified for 101 levels, or 100 levels classes. One thing that I took away from the main presentation and the main speaker, Brandon Fleming, he had a project called the Harvard Diversity Project, bringing underprivileged students into dreaming of making it to an Ivy League university. And some of the, I quoted him here in a post on their mobile application, "Everything in my life was changed because of the compassionate nature of a teacher." And he said, "Representation is the lens that we should aspire for." He said English, he studied literature, so he said, "English did not change me. Education did not change me. Love is what changed me, and empathy is what changed me." And he added that stories usually change more than just information and data. And he talked about, obviously, his true story, how he transformed and became somebody who is now looked upon as a role model. He also said, "Empathetic education and equity are two important topics every educator needs to understand and practice." So, I found very inspiring. I also attended two classes. One is obviously on CBA 104 by M A S B's attorney, Brad Banasek, who covered a lot of topics, very important topics, from OMA to conflict of interest. And one thing that I took from 109, Data Informed Decision Making Process, is that data, whilst there, should be helping us to make better decisions. It's not to be the major or the full thing. There was also another session that was presented by Roxanne Turner and Janelle Stewart of the MSU Children and Youth Institute, where they talked about how students feel about adults around them and their goals. And they talked about the different levels that usually adults, or how much youth and adults are involved together. So, the lowest level is seeing youth as objects. The second level is recipients of education, especially in the education setting. And then, the third level is as a resource. And the best level is to have youth at the partners' level. There were also another great speaker, keynote speaker, on the third day, Dr. Kinder Lawson of OLS Education, who also honed a lot more about data and that there is a lot of obsession about data and metrics right now. And we tend to neglect the building true relationships that truly empower districts. Though the quote about data speaks for itself, or numbers don't lie, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes. And she said that she trains her students like athletes. "We prep them to show up every day and show what they got. I tell them that every test is a challenge that they need to overcome." So, major takeaways to model empathy, empowerment, and engagement. Ensure that school districts leaders have the support and resources they need to take the steps described, establish implementation of these steps. Make sure that there is a story, and it's being reflected on the school district communication, budget, and improvement plans. And also, recognize that we are truly, truly stronger together. And COVID has shown us one thing, that unity is totally... And networks with many individuals around the state of Michigan, especially the Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Daniel Bazey, who actually led a session on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And her and her board president, Dr., or Ms. Sandra Dochi, and the board members have transformed their district, Fairndale, to be more equitable and diversified. And they're still on that route, which is an inspiring story to see. Also, Matt Fortson, high school principal, not principal, Fortson High School teacher, Mr. Daniel Taylor, who is actually a school board member at his hometown, Central Lion District. And it was a great lunch with him. So, Dearborn breeds winners. So, we do have people who serve on other school boards, who are employees of our district, and we also thank them for their service. That was it.
So, just as a little bit of background, this is one of M A S B's annual events. What they do is, they rotate the location between Grand Rapids, Metro Detroit, and up north at... I'm going to forget it, just outside Traverse City. First day, one of the things that we always do is the delicate assembly. And this was the first time we did the delicate assembly in a couple of years due to COVID. So, we went over many different items for the code of conduct, the policies for the M A S B itself. So, we went through all of that. The president of the M A S B was also briefing us. He was thanking every single board member for choosing to serve, knowing that this has been a very difficult time to serve on boards. And also commenting on some of the, call it disagreements, between the Michigan School Board Association and the National School Board Association that was happening at that time. So, that was some of the briefs that we got. A lot of great speakers, as usual. And I attended a couple of breakout sessions also offered through their learning program. One was on how you can fund projects within your district between bonds, millages, sinking funds, things like that. And then, I also attended a session on social media, specifically about us as board members. What are we allowed to put out there on social media? When is it considered free speech versus more privileged? And what does a board have the right to do if you've got board members that are out there communicating things that might not be the view of the board itself? So, it was a great time, a great chance to get to see people from all around the state. Like I said, first time in a couple of years we had a chance to get together.
Before you step away, Trustee Thorpe, do you have information on that particular session on appropriate use of social media that you could share with the board? Was there any handouts given?
I believe I still have the handouts from both of the M A S B learning tracks that I took.
Yes, if you could share those, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Oh, and also, I already had spoken with Ms. Farage and Dr. Patterson. One of the things I did was learn more about the type of testing that we do. And the speaker, and I can't remember his name, but I want to say he's the superintendent for Huron Schools, Huron Valley Schools. I said I was from Dearborn, and he said, "Oh, you got a great team. They're doing a great job." And then, came back here, and they're already doing a lot of the things that you talked about. So, thanks.
And then, information is on the website, if you want to download.
I was going to say, yeah.
So, Trustee Mozeb brought a slideshow. I'm old, I brought a visual aid, so. You ready? It's for you, Mr. Trustee Petrichov. You'll find out. The first two were very easy. I also attended three sessions. The first one I'm going to go over is the board leadership, overcoming obstacles. And there was a lot of handouts. Managing difficult board members. Five tips for dealing with difficult board members. Types of divisive board members. And I sat and listened to some of these board members from all over the state, and some like very close to our district. All I can say is, "Oh, my God." "Oh, my God, what's going on?" And this was close to us. They were being up on their superintendent. There was one board district where one board member was sitting here, and her colleague was sitting to my left, and they were nice to each other. So, we are blessed. Not only we get along, we kind of like each other. We'll hang out at a football game on a Friday night with the superintendent, some of my colleagues. We'll go out to lunches, we'll go out to breakfast. I get treated for my birthday, it's coming up, Roxanne.
I know it is.
Yeah, no, we have, just, I'm adding a little humor here for the Dearborn community. Yeah, we are blessed with the board that we have here. It wasn't always like that, but the board we have here, we are blessed. The second one I'm going to go over real quickly is using persuasive skills to reach consensus. I mean, straightforward information. They recommended dialogue instead of debate. Let's have a discussion. And that's what we do. Once we go, like, let's say if we have a closed session, or we get together for a small group meeting, let's have a dialogue. Let's talk about these things. You and I are not going to agree on things, but let's talk and see if we can move a little closer. There was an activity, which was, I wanted to bring it back and mention it. Some of the items on here were computers for every student. Air conditioning in all buildings. Does that sound familiar? Strong parent involvement, it just goes through each district, going pretty much, going through pretty much same thing as remaining in the district. The last one I attended was ethical challenges. Ethics, a conception of, a conception of right and wrong behavior, defining for us when our actions are moral and when they're not. There were four ethical directives that they went over. First is perception. Doing the right thing because it is important for the people to know that we are doing the right thing. Then, there's the practical imperative directive. Doing the right thing because it is good for business, of course. Then, there's the legal. Doing the right thing because there are penalties for doing the wrong thing. Then, there's a moral directive. Doing the right thing because it is the right thing to do. Trustee Petrichov, let me explain this. Probably about fifteen, sixteen years ago, I chaired the Board of Realtors Ethics and Professionalism Committee. And for our first committee, I had my committee members come in, and I wanted to hear from them, "What does ethics mean to you? And what is professionalism?" And I remember the Realtor came in and brought this chain with a combination lock. He said, "As Realtors, we're mostly, you know, most of the Realtors in the area are very, very ethical." And he just, he took each link and mentioned somebody that he knows that he's worked with and had good things. And as Realtors, we live by a code. But there's always that one that cracks the ethics bond for the Realtors. So, in every organization, the person at the top might be the most ethical person. People around him are very, very ethical, but there's always one person. That one person might not be unethical intentionally. So, I think it's up to the team to pick up and talk to the individual, and us as board members to bring things up when we see, it could be, it could be an educator, it could be a teacher, it could be an employee, it could be anywhere in the district. But at the end, they represent the district, and they represent the person at the top. Doing the right thing. I'm sorry?
When nobody's watching.
This is my presentation. He's cheating, he's looking at my notes. Bottom line is ethics, yes, is doing the right thing when nobody's watching. Thank you. What's up?
God is watching.
Any questions?
Well done, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you.